We are live on you too, Alderman King. You can begin.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Sophia King. I am the Alderman of the Fourth Ward, where the proposed projects sit. Community vetted and empowered projects are some of the best. I'm excited about the partnership to bring sustainable development to Chicago. Sustainable in so many ways environmentally, socially, and equitably. I'm happy to say that this process includes community members that actually live adjacent to the project. I'd like to thank Dennis McLendon, the Chair of the Development Committee for the South Loop Advisory Committee, along with Pam Lewick, Helen Strauss, who is here, Noah Tremayner, I hope I pronounced that correctly, and Prentice Butler. I'd like to thank them and the rest of the committee for taking the time. These are four strong proposals. However, we will only be able to choose one. If you have compelling, if you have compelling comments, please email them to our office at ward04@cityofchicago.org. We will forward them to the community members of the selection committee. I'd also like to thank the mayor and her team, led by Commissioner Cox and Cindy Rubik for their leadership. I'd also like to thank the selection committee, especially the community members, as I mentioned, for taking the time to represent the larger community in this endeavor. We're really looking forward to their selection. Without further ado, I will turn it over to Cindy Rubik, as I said, in the Department of Planning and Development. She's been leading this effort. So, thank you Cindy for that, and I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you so much, Alderman King, and thank you so much for your support on this initiative as well. We've been working on this really for well over a year. So, it's exciting to show the public where we are today, which is we have four exciting proposals to show from the RFP submissions, and we have the teams here today to also answer the questions from the public. And really, these are underutilized city-owned parcels in a great location in the loop, right next to Pritzker Park, across the street from the Herald Washington Library, and with immediate access to all of the CTA train lines that come around the loop. And really would be a catalyst for this part of State Street as well. And we'll incorporate improvements to the park, which are much needed. And of course, it would be also the first net zero carbon high-rise building in the city, which is very exciting. So, I have just a really quick overview to share with folks who may not be as familiar with the proposal. Can you see my screen? So... For our agenda today, we have the four teams who will be presenting, and we have an eight-minute video to present for each of the teams. And then, we will have a verbal Q and A for 22 minutes for each of the teams. However, we will also have the teams respond to questions in writing as well. If you use your Q and A box from the Zoom webinar format, they'll be able to answer your questions as well. So, again, this is a Zoom webinar format. The meeting is being recorded. The recording will be available on our webpage, www.chicago.gov/c40. Please use the Zoom Q and A function for any questions during the webinar. If you can, if your question is specific to a team, please identify the team name at the beginning of your question. That would be helpful for the team in their response. All of your questions and ideas are valid, and then the questions may also be responded from the developer team either in writing or verbally during this meeting. So, for those of you who are not familiar with the C40 Cities Network Organization, they have a network of large cities across the world. Over 90 cities are a part of this network, and their goal is to reduce the impact of cities and buildings on climate change and our carbon footprint. And so, this competition was organized by C40, and the cities decided whether or not they would participate. And so, Chicago decided over a year ago that we would participate. And then, the bidding team submit and propose urban development that has low carbon footprint. And there are 10 challenges for climate in this competition. Three that relate to the carbon impact footprint, and then another five that deal with resilience and sustainability, including green jobs, sustainable water management, which is a large issue here in Chicago. And then, the other two also include social benefits for the project, inclusive actions, the community process, community benefits, and then high-quality architecture. So, these are the parcels in blue that are city-owned, and as I said, it is right next to Pritzker Park and across the street from the Herald Washington Library. And the city-owned parcels will be subject to future sale as part of this two-step competition process. And we have required the finalist teams to identify future funding commitment to improve Pritzker Park as part of their redevelopment proposal. In addition to the carbon-neutral design, other public benefits are expected as part of the redevelopment proposals. And you'll see this in their eight-minute videos, as well as the information that we've uploaded on our webpage. So, this is the view of the site from Plymouth Court. It has an underutilized parking garage right now, and obviously, that can be demolished. And this is a part of the open space that's connected to Pritzker Park that would also be redeveloped. That's right in front of the CTA station. And there's the view of the CTA station, looking from State Street. And then, you see in the background, Herald Washington Library as well. So, I think a lot of you are familiar with the site. But just to go over where we have been and what we've been doing the last year, we did have some stakeholder coordination. We started this work in the fall. And then, we had a community meeting right before our shutdown. It was our last in-person community meeting that DPD was involved with, so March 4. And that was in the Herald Washington Library. We also did a public survey, which was great. And then, we started the competition process April 9, and we received 13 submissions on the due date of July 6. And we selected five teams in September, but four teams are continuing with our process. And so, today, we have our community meeting. We also posted another survey. And we'll be gathering feedback as part of this process, and then we'll be selecting the winner either by end of May or early June. And then, really, that's not the end of the process. We're going to continue working with the community, with the Aldermen, and making sure that the design is, you know, what it needs to be, and the park as well. The Park District has their own process for the design of the improvements. So, just to reiterate, we already completed the Phase 1 process of the competition. We had a pretty large voting member group with all the agencies that are impacted, and we also had three community representatives on that committee as well. And it was a more involved review process where we had a scoring criteria for each of these evaluation points that you see on the screen here. And again, we had 13 submissions that we narrowed down. And so, for this selection committee, we have a little bit of a smaller group, but still really robust with representatives from the Department of Planning, the Department of Housing, Chicago Park District, C40, and we have, as Alderman King identified, community representatives also involved. And we have some outside design and development experts as well. And then, both Alderman King and our Commissioner are non-voting advisory members as well. And the evaluation criteria is very similar to the first phase, as you can see on the right. So, what we hope to accomplish today really is for you to meet the respondent teams, the four teams that are going through this evaluation process, learn about their proposals. Their videos have been uploaded on our webpage, so, you know, if you want to see them again after tonight, you can. And then, for you to provide feedback and ask questions. Oh, I'm going to stop showing that part of my screen. We'll go to the first video, which is from the Common Ground Collaborative Team.
Common Good Collaborative Team.
I'm sorry, Common Good Collaborative Team. I'm so sorry, Common Good Collaborative Team. So, here's their eight-minute video. Just hold on one second. Just need to make sure I optimize it. Okay, so here's the eight-minute video.
The Loop is the heart of Chicago, a center that has fueled economic growth and innovation since its beginning. But over the years, the Loop has become inaccessible to many Chicagoans. And that raises a question: How do we thrive without addressing inequality? It's not just about buildings. It's about people. The Loop is everyone's neighborhood.
The climate crisis, social inequities, and the lack of affordable housing present a unique opportunity for Chicago to innovate and lead once again.
We realize that the time is now. We want to reimagine a future that is sustainable, equitable, and resilient.
The disruption of the past year focused our team to rethink the future of our cities. C40 and the city have given us an opportunity to create the Arbor, a place that is community-based, sustainable, affordable, and innovative. As we developed our design, our highly diverse project team subscribed to one simple concept: Everyone has an equal voice at the table. Our design reflects the creativity of every team member.
We created a place where every Chicagoan belongs. We are bringing culture and craft in from the surrounding city and sending dollars back to the neighborhoods. We have formed strategic alliances to program our public spaces.
The Silver Room will curate the market hall, bringing makers, artisans from across the city. It will be a catalyst for economic change, making connections between Chicago's diverse population.
A Safe Haven will offer a tailored approach to housing and social services in our community center. A Safe Haven's been active in Chicago since 1994, helping thousands of individuals each year to transition to sustainable self-sufficiency.
We also met with the Loop Alliance and local universities to inform how we connect with area retailers and the large student population.
Biophilic design guides us toward a new architecture. People respond to natural light, views of nature, and organic patterns such as tree bark, which is nature's enclosure system. We were inspired by the willow tree and translated this biophilic pattern into a self-shading facade.
The building is all-electric, designed to be extremely energy-efficient, and projects to use 50% less energy compared to a baseline Chicago building. Solar panels will generate 20% energy onsite. The remaining 80% will be procured by off-site renewables. Collectively, this will achieve net-zero carbon emissions for building operation. The design also reduces water consumption, saving 5.9 million gallons of potable water annually.
Based on our climate change risk assessment, the design anticipates to mitigate extreme weather events through an optimally insulated envelope, passive heating and ventilation, battery power backup, and locating all critical infrastructure on the second floor, using a lifecycle analysis, measuring our embodied carbon and emissions reductions. Our lifetime carbon footprint before offsets is 49% lower compared to a typical building.
Our design is LEED Platinum, FitWell, and Passive House-ready. But sustainability isn't only embedded in the building design. This project will generate $25 million in green construction spending and 133 sustainable construction industry jobs. We are committed to achieving the highest level of performance on each of the 10 sustainable challenges for C40. Sustainable design is also equitable design, and there is a real need for affordable housing in the Loop.
Today, there are only 32 ARO units throughout the neighborhood. To help relieve this affordability burden, LUN Leas has partnered with KMA to finance and manage this development.
Of the Arbor's 356 residences, 72 are affordable and 151 are workforce housing. Our partnership is offering $2 million to purchase the site, $2 million to improve Pritzker Park, and is not seeking any public financial support.
As the partner general contractor, Boer will help recruit local providers and minority and women-owned businesses to make this a truly diverse and locally-built project.
The biophilic pattern of the exterior enclosure is a metaphor for the building's innovative structure. The top 18 stories of the building is structured with cross-laminated timber. This system is remarkably lightweight and sequesters carbon. In fact, it reduces embodied carbon by 86% compared to a baseline concrete superstructure. This would be Chicago's first mass-timber high-rise and the lightest tall building in the city. The skin is composed of lightweight, glass-fiber reinforced concrete panels, a strong, light, low-carbon, and modular exterior wall system. Only eight different molds create the entire facade and reduce construction waste.
The mass-timber structural system is compliant with the International Building Code. We will closely partner with the Chicago Building Department to prove the safety and performance of this innovative system. In addition, we also designed a low-embodied-carbon, modern post-tension system. This alternate system provides a cost-effective method to also deliver a highly sustainable structure.
We've completely reimagined Pritzker Park, encouraging Chicagoans to move through the park. There are rain gardens and terraced landscapes, an amphitheater and stage, big lawn and grove, picnic tables, food trucks, and many spaces to gather, meander, discover, and relax.
The building meets the park at this plaza, opening up in a large gesture of operable glass walls. Inside, a buzzing market hall with movable displays showcasing the craft and creativity of our city neighborhoods. By day, it's a market. By night, it's a performance venue. Along Van Buren is the entry to a Safe Haven Community Center.
The residential lobby is located along a reimagined Plymouth Court. The tower includes one-bedroom, convertible studio, and co-living units. Our co-living units include four private suites and a shared living and kitchen space. They are fully furnished for those seeking fewer possessions and more experiences.
At the top of the building, we've designed fitness, study, and social spaces, along with an outdoor roof deck and urban farm. These spaces bring people together. Floating above the urban farm is a canopy of solar panels on rockers to follow the sun, harvesting energy and shading the amenity deck.
A city needs shared places to build community. Pritzker Park and the market hall will be choreographed to be a destination for everyone. The community center will serve our most vulnerable neighbors, while the residences will become home to an economically diverse community.
2020 was a year of disruption. 2021 is a year of rebirth. The design is a blueprint for a healthy, sustainable, carbon-neutral, resilient, and equitable future. In the birthplace of the skyscraper, the Arbor can be a catalyst for change of equal importance. We look forward to partnering with the city to bring our sustainable vision to life.
Okay, thank you so much for that video. Alderman King, did you want to start off with any questions you had? Or would you want me to go into some of the questions we received?
Yeah, why don't we, yeah, why don't we start with the questions that we received? And then, go from there. Just a level set. How much time do we have for the questions?
We have about 22 minutes.
Okay, so for each, after each presentation, okay. So, why don't you start with the ones?
Sure. I think there were some questions that we received for this team. If you could clarify the affordable housing proposed in this development.
Sure, thanks Cynthia. And thank you, everyone, for coming tonight and sharing time. I know all the teams are eager to tell their stories, and we want to also acknowledge the stories that already exist on the site, from housing, from the park, from the histories of Chicago. And we feel that is important and that framed how we went about the project and built our team from that. I'm Catherine Darnstead from Leyton Design, one of the architecture and urban design firms on the project. And out of the affordable units, we have 356 total units. As mentioned in the video, 72 are affordable units, 156 are workforce units, and that leaves 128 market rate units. I'll pass this question over to Devin to introduce himself and add a little bit more context to that question.
Hi, my name is Donovan Rolland. I'm president with KMA Companies. We're affordable housing developer. We've done work in North Lawndale and West Pullman and whatnot. But the Arbor has 10% of its units available at 60% AMI, as mentioned, and then 10% of its units available at 80% AMI. And then, another 42% of our units at between 90% and 120% AMI. So, for those that don't know what AMI is, it's area meeting income for the Chicagoland area. So, that takes into consideration Chicago, as well as Naperville, Joliet, and some of the surrounding area. So, for some context, what that means is an individual would earn about $39,000 a year and would be eligible to move into our apartments. And then, for a two-person household, incomes would be about $45,000. So, if you're in a two-person household, individual incomes could be as low as $22,500. So, that gives you an idea as to where the rents start, and hopefully, that answers the question.
Great, thank you. And I saw that there was a question that was answered also written. So, if folks who are on the webinar want to see that. What about?
I may, just a follow-up, because it's on this theme. Can you explain to the general audience what you mean by workforce units?
Yeah, so I would say that that's naturally occurring affordable housing units. So, those are, you know, what we're really trying to do is build housing without using public assistance. And we hope that this is a template that can be used for us to build across the city, but for others as well. And so, workforce housing, I would say, is between, you know, the 90% to 120% AMI. And that's, you know, 156 units in total.
Okay, and just if you could say what the range is for income, again, for those as well.
For the workforce housing?
Yes.
Okay, so those are 90% to 120% AMI. The specific incomes there, I do not have in front of me. I have as low as $39,000 for 60% AMI. But the average income for the area is about 62, so that's 100%, so you would just take a percentage of $62,000 a year, and you can times that by 80%. Apologize, I'm not good at doing math on the fly, but that would be what that is, and for 120 would be the same thing.
Okay, we can circle back to that specifically.
No problem. Once I pull out my calculator, you can respond.
Yeah, in general, you're looking at rent rates between, you know, a junior one-bed could be $1,000, and a rent could also go up to $2,200 if that's what you were looking for to break it down as well.
Yeah, to clarify, the rent range goes from $9,560 to $2,235.
But they would be limited to people within those incomes?
Yeah, so a one-person, an individual would be $39,000 a year on the low end, and then, a couple could be $45,000. So, combined, or individually, that might be $22,500 in income. That's just an average. So, if you're married and one person has income, the other doesn't, that could be $45,000.
Got it. I know a couple other questions have come in in the chat. Can you explain how the self-shading system works and emulates a willow tree?
That's a really good question, and I think, Joe, if you could introduce yourself and answer that for us.
Sure, this is Joe Valerio from Valer du Walt Train. And what we did functionally, it's very simple. Imagine as the sun moves across the building, the projecting elements on the facade come into play as the sun moves from east to south, and those projecting elements wind up shading the adjacent windows. This really improves our performance, lowers our energy demands for the building. And in terms of the willow tree, we used it as inspiration for our enclosure system, which has a similar kind of muscular and very sculptural quality. At least, that is in the eyes of the beholder. But thank you for your question.
Right. Another good question I see is, it says, you know, I heard you say studios and one bedrooms. Why not a few two-bedrooms?
That's a, that is a good question, and I also saw there was a companion question to that, talking about family units. And I think we were asked to answer a lot of challenges and provide solutions for a variety of complicated issues that are happening around the site and the Loop regarding affordability. In terms of some of the unit, how that breakdown worked, I would like to pass that question to Ted to introduce himself and share a bit more about how we came to this breakdown.
Hi, everyone. I'm Ted Wellen, head of development for LUN Leas Chicago, and extremely excited to be part of this team. And thank you, Alderman King, for asking that question. You know, we really, as we analyze this and the area, we're really focused on, and our target here is the service industry in Chicago's Loop and downtown area. And we feel that area is really underserved, also looking at small families. And we really don't see that many in the Loop, but really in the surrounding area immediately, surrounding central business districts. So, we thought it would be best to really focus on providing those folks that are in the service industry or a few years out of school, or, you know, you know, police officers and nurses and other groups. And so, that's really what we focused on for our, for our housing unit mix.
I would say there are a couple of follow-up questions along those lines. Are there Section 8 vouchers accepted?
We would accept Section 8 vouchers.
And then, can you please define what you mean by co-living? That was a question that came up, and I saw it just disappeared. But yeah, can you define what you mean by co-living?
Devin, I think you could answer that one, and thanks Jenny for answering that. If you're looking for an answer, you could go to the Answer tab of the Q and A to see that.
Yeah, so as you can see on the screen here, oh, I think it just disappeared. But those were the, yeah, the bottom units there. So, there's 17 co-living suites. And what those are, are four-bed, four-bath apartments. And they would rent each suite individually. So, for example, you would see, you know, whether you see the bed, right, that would be a unit. And then, you would share the common areas. And so, we think that this is a way to expand affordability for those that wanted to live in the Loop, or who might even work in the Loop and want to live in the Loop. We've been doing this for a long time at KMA. We've been doing it since the 90s. It's really an innovative way to expand affordability, and it's really just roommates. But what it does is it allows you to separate the financial responsibility from one roommate to the other. So, for example, someone's lease might expire in December. Someone else's lease might expire in July, and actually, one person may not be paying rent. And normally, that might evict the entire household. But this, in this case, would make it so each individual is independent from one another, but they would be able to, you know, be in a community. And really, this is the most inclusive housing that I think exists. We have 60% AMIs, 80% AMIs, market rate, all in one unit, all in living together. And we're excited to bring this to the Loop.
Great. How much more time for this group, Cindy, just so I can?
We still have 12 minutes.
Oh, great. So, I can prioritize some of the good questions that are coming. One specifically about minimum wage workers who might make about $20,000 a year. The question is, if they work full-time, it says, would your units still be unaffordable for them at $29,000 a year?
Devin, you could go ahead.
Yeah, so I think back to the previous point. If you have two minimum wage workers living together, they would be close. So, the combined incomes would be $42,000, as mentioned. And then, for an individual, it would be slightly lower at approximately $39,000 a year. But, you know, to the extent we talked about vouchers, for example, vouchers would But, you know, to the extent we talked about vouchers, for example, vouchers would be accepted here. So if the individual was working a minimum wage job and had a voucher, that person would be accepted. But we would evaluate on a case-by-case basis. But really, the income restrictions, you know, kind of are what they are. They're prescriptive from HUD in the city of Chicago, so we adhere to those guidelines.
Right, and I know there's kind of a follow-up question to that, and, you know, one that I've asked before, because I know you guys aren't getting any government money or asking for any. And so your commitment to affordability is very laudable. But, you know, what accountability do you have long-term to that? So there's a question about this.
Yeah.
How long will the affordable units be affordable? And, yes.
And Ted, do you think you could answer that one, talking about your commitment to affordability and what we see as part of this project and the example?
Yeah, we, Alderman, are committed to, to provide these, these income limits and are willing to work with the city of Chicago to memorialize these through a restrictive covenants on the property, which is the best, best way to do that. So what we would like to do is focus on, even though we are not receiving any public subsidy for this besides, you know, working on the negotiation of the land price, to work with the city to develop a program where we can actually restrict these for, for the same time period that you would in a, in a tax credit project.
And, yeah, so that's important to us, and I appreciate you willing to work with the city on that.
And if I could just add one more thing to that. So, so KMA, we typically use tax credits. You know, one thing that really excited us about this opportunity was to come up with a private selector solution to really address the shortage of affordable housing units. And, you know, I commend the Len Lease team for really coming up with innovative structure here to be, you know, to show our level of commitment to bringing these units and keeping them affordable long-term.
Great, appreciate that. I think I've exhausted some of the questions, although there was one there that I wanted to ask, and I think it was answered probably live, so I'm gonna go back. Parking options, are there any parking options?
There is no parking on the site, and I would pass that over to Joe Valerio to expand about parking and the reasons why.
Yeah, we actually believe that this site is incredibly well-served by public transportation. The neighborhood has got all of the resources that you would need to live. We think there's actually too many parking spaces right now in, within the Loop. And so for all those reasons, and also for the issue of lowering the carbon emissions from the city, we just really felt it was inappropriate to put parking into this building.
Right, and, and I don't know, hardly any other buildings can stay there literally adjacent to public transportation like this building is.
We did include parking spaces for food trucks, though.
Very thoughtful, very thoughtful. Another question that's dear to my heart, that was answered in the chat, but I, I think it deserves a public answer, is, you know, the equity of your team. When you talk about diversity, and somebody asking you shed light on equity providers for the project, and if they contain racially diverse partners, can you talk about that? Can you talk about the diversity of team, the diversity of equity? And start with the budget for the project, thanks.
So you're, the diversity of the team, there's two questions in there, so we have the diversity of the team?
Yeah, there is.
Or that we have equity around the project in terms of funding?
There are three, let's start.
Okay.
The budget of the project overall.
Yeah.
So that's one.
Okay.
And then the diversity of the team. And, and the diversity, I would say, I think their point they're trying to get to is, in the project, there's a specific budget. You know, how is the equity spent between the team members? If there are diverse team members, shed light on the diversity as it's spread across those team members.
Right, so since we have this slide up, I'll talk quickly to the team members on this one. So our team reflects the diversity that we see within the city and within the site every day. We have both women and minority-owned businesses at every level of the project, including other, including also within our development partnerships between Len Lease and KMA. We also have partnership between Len Lease Construction and BOA. And I'll pass it over to Nosa to introduce himself and talk a little bit more about BOA Construction and your work.
Well, if you can just give us the straight numbers first and then
Okay.
go into that detail a little later. But, so what, what, how is the, how is the equity spread across your diverse team? And again, with the partnership with your minority partner, what's that? What's the diversity? And, or what's the breakdown for the budget across that diverse team as well?
Okay, so Ted, do you want to answer that one?
Yeah, I'll start from the larger development perspective. The development's approximately a hundred million, a hundred million dollars. And when we actually look at the joint venture, Len Lease and KMA are in a joint venture together, and
Is KMA a minority firm?
KMA is a minority firm. They are not currently registered at the, as a city, but they have applied for MBE.
So we're pending with the state of Illinois.
So what, what is that? What's the demographics of that diversity?
Sixty-six percent of our ownership is minority.
What is it?
Type of minority?
Yes.
Oh, Hispanic?
Okay, thank you. I think folks want just full disclosure and everything. Okay, great. And so, going back, so what's that breakdown again?
So the, what we've done, Alderman King, is approximately a hundred million dollars total development costs. And the, the joint venture will be, it's seventy, in terms of equity, seventy-five percent, twenty-five percent. So seventy-five percent Lon Lease, twenty-five percent KMA. We will, then, of that equity, which will be fifty percent of the development project, the remainder will be a, will be a private lender, as well as we will have, we will typically put in, as a team, twenty-five percent of the equity. I know this is confusing. And then we will also have a joint venture partner that will put in the remainder of the, of the equity.
And do you know who the joint venture partner is?
Well, that will be, it will be an investment fund. And we're, at this point, we're looking at a wear super, which is a large pension fund, but there are other, other opportunities. We've also had interest from the Canadian CPP Pension Fund.
Right. And then can you talk about the budget for the construction and that partnership and?
Yeah, so I'm gonna turn that over to Bert and Nosa, just to talk about their joint venture partnership. I can tell you, though, that it is a, BOA is a forty percent partner on the, on the construction. Bert or Nosa, do you want to take the lead on this?
I'll just step in real quick and good afternoon, everybody. I'm Bert Brandt, general manager of construction for Len Lease here in Chicago. Hard cost construction on this job is, is currently budgeted at approximately sixty-five million and will be in a sixty-forty joint venture partnership with BOA Construction. And with that, I can turn it over to you, Nosa.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Nosa. And here, I'm a president, CEO of BOA Construction. Alderman, good to see you, committee members, good to see you guys. So we are a, we have a joint venture partnership that we've put together with Len Lease. I, I will say, though, it's important to note that, just as an organization, BOA Construction, our reputation speaks for itself. I mean, we, when you see us in the joint venture, in this case, we've partnered with Len Lease on several projects in the city. We're on other projects with them as well. We will have a forty percent equity stake in the joint venture, equal to the risk and also the reward of the project. So some teams have formed where you may have no risk and have a sub-con consultant role, where you're just providing roles or people. This is a real joint venture, meaning we have risk, reward, staff, management, and oversight of the project to that forty percent stake. It's sort of just to dial into the details of what the joint venture represents. It's, it's really, but at the top-tier level, though, it's also an opportunity to make sure that we're having other Black and Brown, specifically African-Americans, participate at a prime level at the subcontracting level as well. So it's a, it's a JV prime, but then also having other Black and Hispanic subcontractors participate to drive that participation up to forty, fifty, or sixty percent, or even higher than the typical twenty-six and six that you see in the city.
Let me just add, this is Joe Valerio. We expect to exceed the city's targets by fifty percent for minority and women-owned business participation in the design team.
Great. Cindy, you got time for us? Well, how much?
That's it, that's out of time. Perfect timing, Alderman. And I know the team will continue to respond. I know the team will continue to respond in the Q and A, which is great. So we'll go, I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen for the next team's proposal, team video, which is the EcoVibe team. So just hold on one second. All right, so I'm gonna play this video.
Imagine, here at the intersection of State Street and Van Buren, Chicago's site of the international C40 Reinventing Cities competition. We have an opportunity to execute our vision for the future of sustainable design and construction. Together, DL3 Realty and CityPads, along with our design partners from Perkins and Will, Brook Architecture and Site Design Group, and our construction team led by Yujama and Power, we are extremely proud to introduce EcoVibe at Pritzker Park. A carbon-neutral building designed to give central business district workers and artists a place to live, work, and create. Our team is passionate about developing a project that is at the vanguard of sustainable design, and we are committed to bringing an exciting new mixed-use building to a historically under-invested corner of the Loop. One hundred percent of our units will be below the pricing of comparable luxury buildings downtown, available for workers and affordable. Sixty-eight units, or nearly a third of the building, will be dedicated to creating a new artist community that welcomes artists that have graduated from local universities, as well as their professors and others engaged in the arts to live and work downtown. EcoVibe is intentionally designed as an ecosystem, a place to live, work, and create. Live is composed of private and shared street residences that provide much-needed housing serving the central business district at or below area market rents. Work is a neighborhood commercial component and will provide a cafe fronting the park, retail, and medical health services, which are severely lacking in this federally-recognized medically-underserved area. Create provides affordable housing dedicated to artists and creativity. EcoVibe at Pritzker Park is a holistic design, responds to the environment and context, and our approach is driven by four guiding principles: inclusive housing, creative community, healthy living, and a sustainable design that is in harmony with the planet.
EcoVibe at Pritzker Park presents a unique opportunity to create an intentionally holistic and sustainable architecture that both integrates and activates the public realm.
EcoVibe will provide a great opportunity for a true community space, community park within the Loop itself.
The intentionality of the design. I mean, we really wanted to start to look at how people kind of move through this space and how people want to move through this space.
At the ground plane, creating high visibility and high transparency of the commercial spaces in relationship to the park were really important to create an activation of that space.
Photovoltaic cells line the southern facade and rooftop, both harnessing and controlling natural light. The articulation of these elements also presents a scale and materiality that is a modern counterpoint to the surrounding historical context.
EcoVibe's mission is to provide inclusive housing and luxury for all by reinventing workforce and low-income housing, which comprises nearly ninety percent of our units. A crucial part of this residential program is the shared housing concept that offers fully furnished and all-inclusive packages. Our partner, CityPads, is leading a new wave of investment in the shared housing market here in Chicago.
The housing comes with a fully furnished unit, not only a bedroom, but also the living room. And your kitchen comes fully furnished, all your things you need for your daily life. Not only does it come with pots and pans, but we also supply paper towels and toilet paper, laundry detergent. All of these shared goods that are the pain points of sharing an apartment are supplied for you.
But perhaps the most exciting concept in our housing model is the residences for low-income artists. In partnership with ArtSpace, we've envisioned a holistic and safe environment where artists live in a like-minded community, collaborate with their neighbors, and freely pursue their artistic passion.
This is a very unique collaboration and opportunity for artists that doesn't exist in many big cities in this country. There is significant demand for creative space and specifically artist housing.
Many artists are working with little means because they're prioritizing their work. And the idea of having affordable housing in the heart of downtown is exceptional. The fact that art is connected through the entire building and that there is a sense of luxury for all is so important.
Artists feed off of each other, they feed off of different people, and all of that ecosystem can come together at EcoVibe and can thrive. One of the things that's really special about it is that it provides a safe space for artists to come together and gather and just be their full selves. It's an opportunity to provide a very equitable way of living for everybody.
In terms of social well-being, EcoVibe will provide different spaces and promote creative activities, which are known to reduce stress and depression, by providing a sense of community that supports one another. And this will help alleviate potential impacts of loneliness or isolation that many have felt during the pandemic. The project will also support emotional well-being for individuals by providing calm places of respite for meditation, yoga, or contemplation.
EcoVibe's main goal is not only to be a living, breathing work of art, but to live in harmony with our planet and improve the life of all its residents.
One of the predominant materials we will be using in EcoVibe is called cross-laminated timber. This is a mass composite of timber using renewable resources that are terrific for the support of sustainable design and offer incredible life safety advantages. Mass timber is effectively a sustainable alternative to reinforced concrete and structural steel.
One of the key approaches we've taken here is to really try to balance that strong focus on the indoor environment, but also on the impact that the building has on the planet. A path to carbon neutrality, which really takes on three components. One is the embodied carbon within the elements of the building, within the structure. The other piece of that is the operational carbon that comes from the energy use within the building, minimizing that, and finding a diversity of energy sources. So onsite solar, both in the facade and in the building, and as well as onsite waste-to-energy systems.
The EcoVibe project at Pritzker Park is about opportunity. Having the average Chicagoan have access to the well-paying jobs that are available in our central business district. Treating artists with dignity and allowing them to have quality, affordable housing. Creating a new set of opportunities here for retailers. Eliminating a medically-underserved area so that people have access to quality healthcare. Come with us as we move this project forward and create a new cultural destination rooted in the arts where creativity is nurtured, inclusivity is intentional, and the arts are promoted beyond the walls of the building. EcoVibe is a place to live, work, and to create. Join us on this journey.
Okay, another great video. I'm gonna start our timer. And then we can start with questions for the team.
And just want to clarify, I'm Leon Walker, managing partner in DL3 Realty. You've got Tanya Kadakia's name labeled, because that's the link that we got, but, you know, I don't know how to change that.
you know, I don't know how to change that, but Leon Walker. And Tanya is on the phone as well.
I can change it for you.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Walker.
Oh, wow. Magic. All right, now we can start the clock.
All right. So we've got twenty-two minutes, Cindy? Okay, great. So there's a question, I think, in the chat that I'll go with first that I think, do you need to be an artist to qualify for the low income units?
Okay, great question. First of all, thank you everyone for allowing us to come and present. We're so excited about this opportunity. Leon Walker, again, managing partner in DL3 Realty. And I'm joined by Andy Aitow, who is the founder and president of Citypads. And together, we're jointly developing the project as fifty fifty partners. And we also have with us Jimmy Akontunde of Ujama Construction, and he's partnered with Power Construction. So we have two African American businesses leading this effort, and it's really exciting for us to be here. In addition to that, we have an extremely intentional and diverse team, from the architecture to landscaping to engineering and design, some of them saw in the video. So just want to make sure we got that question answered. But to the artist housing specifically, it goes again to how we really approached this project from a thoughtful way and understanding the history, the Rialto Theater, which was located this end of downtown, and just thinking about, how do we make State Street, this part of downtown, State Street, really part of the great street of State Street all the way up to Wacker? It's been disinvested and underinvested, which is why it's a priority for DL3 Realty in our approach to bringing capital and equity to underinvested areas of our city. And so we have sixty-eight units, which is thirty percent of the two hundred and twenty-four units in the housing program. And those units will, are dedicated thirty plus years to call artists. But we also have on the Zoom Wendy Holmes from ArtSpace, who actually designed and advocated for the exemption to the low income housing tax credit code to allow for the designation of artists to qualify. There are only two things that you can do in the low income housing tax code, that's artists or seniors housing that's different from just general family housing. So it's not students. It is those who have, who are engaged in the arts or who support the artist community. So you have a broad way of defining, and they call it house rules, how you define the house, and you know, what, you know, the work that would qualify to be a member. But you do have to have some body of work and have some real connection to the artistic community. And that's not only to satisfy the regulations, but also because we want to bring that, that energy, that vibe, if you will, into the building and have it spill out into the park and then connect up the building and the residents and the activities throughout the building with the vibrant art scene that's over at the School of the Art Institute, Columbia, Wabash, and give the South End of State Street a new, reimagined, bigger and vitality.
Great. Can you, I know you mentioned it in your comments a little bit again, but the total, how many total units again?
Two hundred and twenty-four resident units, about twenty-four thousand square feet of commercial space, and then a ground floor with two retail opportunities.
And of the two hundred and twenty-four units, break those down again by type and unit size.
And so we have here. Small. I hear you. So sixty-eight units for the artist community, which is thirty percent of the total units. And then the other stack is the one fifty-six, which is broken down between the co-living model, which is forty-four of those units. And the co-living model is the roommate model, which you've heard about. It's kind of a new way of bringing smaller case A affordable housing to people who, it's cheaper to rent in a co-living unit than it is a studio. Plus you get all the amenities and services and furniture and the dry goods and so forth. So it's an affordable option, but it's forty-four of that one fifty-six. And then the others are very competitively priced from a rental standpoint. But the long term affordable housing is thirty, thirty percent, sixty-eight units of the two twenty-four.
And how long do they have to be affordable?
The city of Chicago is thirty years.
Okay, I know that was asked before. I just wanted to piggyback off of some earlier questions. Another question was, how did you come to land on artists as individuals in need of affordable housing?
Well, I think, you know, it was actually well communicated in the video. Artists, we all benefit from having artists in our community, in our neighborhood. I mean, they add to the, the culture, the vibe, the, you know, what people want to be around because they make it interesting to live around artists. And so, but we oftentimes don't appreciate the financial struggles that artists go through. Those that have graduated from school, they're still trying to make and build a body of work that can be rewarded. The professors who teach the artists, I mean, we've had conversations with them that they need housing. They want to stay close to the schools and they need housing to help them do that. That's why our artist housing units are not just studios and ones, but also two bedded. And so it's, it's really about, you know, thinking about what cultural components we want to bring to the building and to the site. So this, you know, connects up with Pritzker Park and our plans to renovate that park, but brings that artistic vision and culture and vibe to the building and to the site in making this a much more vibrant end of the loop. And hopefully, we believe and have evidence to back us that this will, you know, dissuade some of the other more negative things that they want currently in the park.
So there was a kind of a follow up question about, I guess, provision in the tax code for artists and creatives. So will you have to pay taxes? Is there kind of a tax write off for that type of?
No, no. So the way that works through the tax code and others have mentioned, they're going to be accessing that financing tool to build the project. And so it's a financing tool where investors buy the tax credits and then the proceeds from that sale of tax credits helps to finance the project. However, there are a lot of rules and regulations around the investment that's being made. And so when you talk about artist housing, that's, it's, it's, it's unapproved use within the low income housing tax code. But no, it doesn't have anything to do with taxes on the project.
Right. So this property will pay taxes?
This property will pay taxes.
Okay.
Not only pay taxes, also a portion of it is in the SSA. And so we, you know, I'm a member of the Central Chicago Loop Alliance and the board there. And, you know, I've thought, been thoughtful about how this project can really help invigorate and reimagine and repurpose State Street, right? On the south end, because the south end has gotten the short end of the stick for far too many years. So this is a big investment, a hundred and twenty plus million dollars in a full amenitized building. This is not just cramming units in. Every floor has access to outdoor space. We have two story atriums built into the building every, you know, five or six floors such that you have amenities, I mean, just amazing amenities for the building, as well as an opportunity for artists and artist organizations, School of the Artist, to, you know, National Veterans Museum of Art, and others who have approached us about wanting to display art in the, in the building. And, and that's how we intentionally designed the first floor to connect with Pritzker Park. So it really flows out of the building, right? So the cafe, the artist cafe that we're managing there, the food trucks that can pull in underneath and through our building as we move the current alley to the north. All of that is to activate the space in a way that will bring energy and life and a diversity of residents, businesses, office workers and so forth.
Great. So there's a question just about, have you developed a large residential project on the scale to date?
Yeah. So it absolutely is a great question. We've done probably the most complex deals in the city of Chicago in terms of financing capital stacks. We are traditionally capital, commercial developers in the office, grocery, healthcare space, our movement into housing is more deliberate right now as we're tackling these issues that we see disinvestment, underinvestment. But we've partnered with Citypads. Citypads is an experienced housing developer. They operate several of the co-living products and Andy Aitow who's on as well, has been involved and has developed many of these projects of this scale and size. I think this is still an innovative project for anyone because of the mass timber construction, because of the way that we're one hundred percent of the energy that this building uses will be generated on site. So we are going high amenity, creativity with artists, intentionality around connecting up the park with and creating a space for the south end of the Loop, diversity in our development and construction team, and really an outstanding design. We believe that will, you know, put a point and accentuate the South Loop. But now we've done, no one has done anything more complicated than City of Chicago in terms of financing. We've done everything from li-tex, TIF, new market tax credits. And so this is, in terms of the financing structure in the building, we're very, very comfortable. In terms of operating housing, we have our partner, Citypads, which is our JV part.
Great. I'll just jump in with some of my questions and then go back to some of the Q and A questions provided by some of the attendees. What's the budget uses and sources of your project?
Yeah, so it's just in rough terms. We have a hundred and twenty-eight million dollar project, of which about a hundred million is the construction budget. And the balance is, you know, soft costs, you know, professional fees, other, other costs, as well as the improvements to the park and to the CTA station we are proposing.
And, and so where, where are the sources are coming from?
Sources are not uses, so sources, yeah. So the sources, developer equity. So both Citypads and DL3 are joint venture partners in this project, so.
By how much is developer equity and so on and so forth?
Yes. So roughly a seventy-five to eighty million dollar loan on the project, okay? And the balance is equity. And that equity, and then there's also, there's three kinds of equity. Because we have a li-tex project, there's a portion that will be generated by tax credits. Don't have the exact figure with me right now, but it's a, you know, something on the order of thirteen to fifteen million dollars from the li-tex equity for the project. Then you also have a private investor equity, which is, you know, talked about from the other team as well. And that comes in usually somewhere around eighty percent of the private equity. You know, and so that eighty, say up to ninety percent of private equity is an institutional partner. In this case, we're pleased to have BMO, has submitted with our proposal their term sheet. So we have a fully developed term sheet from BMO to support our efforts here. And then the balance of the equity, roughly five million or so is private developer equity, which we're splitting fifty fifty with our partners.
Right. And a follow up question to that is, how many of your team are actually South Side residents?
That's an interesting question. You know, I'm a fourth ward resident. I'm wondering how many are actually South Side residents, but yeah, you know, lived on the, in the South Side pretty much most of my, not all of my life, except for some stints outside of the city with corporate. But now we know that, I drive by the site every day on my way into work. I know the site very well. I've grown up on the South Side. We, you know, most of us, most know, you know, what we do in terms of DL3 Realty. We've built everything from healthcare centers that are transforming a healthcare desert in Rosen Community to bringing Whole Foods, Starbucks, and Chipotle to Inglewood, to bringing, you know, two thousand jobs to both Chatham and Morgan Park, to, you know, the hundred million dollars plus of investment we're putting into Woodline right now with health centers and affordable housing. We, we have been committed, you know, investors, impact investors in our neighborhood for twenty years now. So this is our money going into our neighborhoods, and I think that's an important distinction. I mean, this, you know, we are, we are very committed to the neighbors I grew up in as a kid.
Great. But let's talk a little bit more about the building and the design itself. A question, can you explain the material finish of the building and its relationship to the Fisher Building?
That's an interesting question. I welcome that. We also, I'm going to give someone else a chance to chime in. Todd, if you are available and talk about the skin of the building, which is, which is self shading. And as you can see, has outdoor space on several levels, but every floor has outdoor space. We also have the solar. So is the question about color, which can be something we're still exploring, to be honest with you. This is, you know, where we've landed for the presentation, but that's something we're still exploring. But Todd, if you want to jump in or I can continue.
Yeah, no. I'm Todd Snapp, a design principal with Perkins and Will. I think the facade, we really wanted to play off sort of the scale and the texture of the surrounding context. So the material that we're proposing, it's a lightweight concrete panel. So, you know, a masonry type material that sort of fits within the character of the surroundings, you know, specifically the Fisher Building. And as Leon mentioned, you know, also, I think there's a a really great scale and texture that's, you know, sort of intentional from a natural ventilation perspective. The Fisher Building in particular, you know, there's references to the Chicago window, things like that. We wanted to sort of look at a modern counterpoint to that. So the facade is slightly articulated consistently to the north. That subtly reduces the, the solar gain on, on the individual units in a very modular and intentional way.
Todd, I'm going to answer the question. I was just sure what question was asked.
Question seemed to be about materiality.
Okay.
And they said something about comparison to the Fisher Building, and I think that was it.
Was another question, Alderman, about whether there was a team member that was familiar with CLT and maybe that the term that needs to be explained to the public and what the limitations are with the current Chicago.
Sure, you could grab that one. Go ahead.
Chicago Low Income Housing Trust, is that, just to make sure.
The question was about the timber?
Yes.
Oh, the cross laminated timber. Okay.
Right.
Yeah, see, all right. So I didn't know what.
Same thing. Laminated timber or Chicago Low Income Housing. Both are appropriate, right?
Yeah, go ahead. Todd, if you were.
Well, I can say as a firm, Perkins and Will as a whole, we have experience of timber at a variety of scales. So mid to semi high rise. There's, I think, we, I think we have someone from Thornton Thomasetti on the team who has.
Yeah, Todd, I am here as well, yeah.
Very thick of it right now.
Sure. Just to introduce myself, David Wine, I'm a senior principal with Thornton Thomasetti. Cross laminated timber is a material that's being used in developments like this that are in pursuit of high quality, sustainable designs. Okay. And it is an engineered product of smaller timber components come together and being used in commercial facilities and residential facilities, just like this, all across the country and around the world. Chicago has been a leader in architectural design for decades, even centuries, and also on the engineering front. And in one place where Chicago is yet to emerge as a leader is in its use of CLT in some of these applications like this. Our team is proposing the introduction of CLT in a relatively modest way in the spirit of partnership with the city and in the spirit of partnership with the building department, so that we can begin to experiment in projects just like this, how to, how to bring this material into the, into the design community here. The image in the lower left on the screen shows the insertion of about five or six floors of CLT between what I would call conventional construction of concrete and steel, essentially stacking three, six story timber buildings like could be built anywhere else in the city, but just one on top of another here. And this is a relatively radical idea in terms of what's been done before. But this is the kind of forward thinking idea we would love to bring to the city and advocate for in the spirit of pushing sustainable design forward in Chicago.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you for that. So folks, we're, we're back to kind of the artist housing. So how about artists with families? Are they welcome?
Yeah. So that's, that's, you know, I mean, families in general in an elevator, you know, multi story building is not necessarily, you know, their first choice. So I think for starter families or for, you know, husband, wife, you know, or partners. So the two bedroom model gives you a lot of flexibility. So that's, that's the key. So the two bedroom model gives you a lot of flexibility, so that's, that's the key. Which gives you that, that ability to be raising a child or dealing with an older adult or different sort of family combinations. But that's why we have two bedroom units incorporated.
Are there accessible artist spaces?
Yeah, yeah, so that, that's all gonna be, you know, driven, you know, a lot of that's driven by code and by some of the regulations for the Lytech housing, but yes, absolutely. As well as a big, a huge workroom, I don't know if we've been able to show that, but this workroom is an amazing space for artists to come and collaborate. This is a highly amenitized building, you know, that's why we're saying, I mean, we're not, you know, this is, you know, outdoor, we, you know, we're designing in the middle of COVID. So outdoor space, you know, you know, collaboration space, you know, the free flow of air through the building, I mean, we have a chance to fully discuss some of those features. But I mean, this is, you know, a highly amenitized building with a beautiful design and thoughtful about how do people want to live here? How are they going, you know, not just, you know, stacking them in, you know, fully, you know, sort of as maxing out the floors, but also providing opportunities for residents to get away. We have individualized space on every floor where people can go and grab, you know, a hotel, what we call a hotel like room to do work. They can, you know, come into these, this is every floor, you know, they can get outs, outdoor space. I mean, you know, they don't have to come all the way down the elevator and go outside, they can get that on every floor and thinking about the, the environment we're living in, how important is that to how we want to live? And live in a multi-family, multi-unit building.
I, I know we're coming up probably just on a couple minutes, but can you speak to how you will seek to achieve kind of net zero, carbon zero?
Yeah, I mean, that's, you know, happy, you know, listen, we're taking this, three sort of components of that, one is what is the building made of? Two is how does the building operate and three, how do we deal with the waste? So in each one of those areas, we are maximizing what we think is achievable. So obviously, we just talked about the cross laminated timber and, you know, how are we going to approach the development of the building? There's several certifications out there, but, you know, here's a diagram that gives you more on that. Then how the building is operating, you know, and, you know, how is waste treated? So in all those, we don't have enough time to go into details and all that, but in those three areas, we're able to achieve a net zero building within a couple of years, so. It's an amazing, you know, sort of process and we're, our team has just been terrific in pulling this together and what I think proposing one of the most innovative. And thoughtful designs that, you know, we've seen.
Right, and you, you spoke a little bit to diversity of your team. Can you break that down kind of by, by budget, right, and by equity stake in this project?
Yeah, I gave you a little bit on the ownership side, so you know, we're 50/50 in the ownership side and really, you know, helping to lead this effort from the development standpoint. This would be the first time you have an African American developer with a swinging crane in downtown Chicago. And, you know, if, if you move forward here on the construction side as well with Jimmy Akentani, Jimmy, are you on as well? From Ujama with his longtime partner, Power. I heard a hello, but I was gonna go from there. And then, you know, all the professional services and design individuals, you can see, I don't have the, you know, specific breakdown, but we can provide that information to you. By budget, but it's substantial, Brook Architecture, Ramona Westbrook is the partner with Perkins. Everything from level one to Engage Civil to Site Design are all MB firms, so it's, it's, we're, we're very intentional about that as well.
All right, well, thank you, we've come to the end of your time, we appreciate your team's presentation and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, all right, the next team is Assemble Chicago. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen and show their video.
In Chicago, the architectural innovation really comes from the response to challenges of the time. And today's challenges are really about housing inequity and climate change.
Assemble Chicago is a new civic hub in the loop that brings Chicagoans together. Serves neighborhoods throughout the city, provides apartments for the loop's essential.
Increase the volume?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Will Woodley, I'm the regional vice president of development for the. The Community Builders is one of the nation's leading mission-driven developers. Our mission is to build and sustain.
I can't hear it, I'm not sure if it's just me.
In Chicago, we've not only.
Sorry, I don't know why. I have my video, I have my volume on full blast, so.
It, can anybody else not hear? If it's just me, that's okay. Now there are others who are saying they can't hear the audio as well.
Sorry about that. Can you still hear me? I'm going to just see if that.
Yeah, I can hear you, we just couldn't hear the, the video was really low.
Today's challenges are really about housing inequity.
Oh, yes, it's still low, I can, I can hear that now, I'm not sure why. Sorry about this. Kevin, are you on right now?
I am, yeah.
To see if you can play it from our.
Yeah.
From our DVD webpage, maybe it's an issue on my end.
Yeah, it looks like you were using Vimeo there, Cindy. I think you, you want to have it as a little file. Play it through media player, so. If you. Can download it or send it to me, I can try to figure that out.
All right, why don't we, why don't we switch the order right now? So why don't, if that's okay with everyone, we'll, we'll, we'll figure this offline and then we'll, why don't we start with the other team first? Then the last team will go to the Inspiration Exchange Team, sorry about this AV issue. But I'll go ahead and share my screen. Okay. So.
Together, we will create a brave space. Because there is no such thing as a safe space. We exist in the real world. We all carry scars and we all have caused beings. In this space, we seek to turn down the volume of the outside world. We amplify voices that fight to be heard elsewhere. We call each other to more truth and love. Chicago is the traditional homeland of the Council of the Three Fires. The O'dawa, the Ojibwe, and Potawatomi Nations. Located at the intersection of several great waterways. The land naturally became a site of travel and healing for many tribes. 158 years after the Indian Removal Act was signed into law. The single resident occupancies, or SROs, located at the current C40 competition site were torn down. Over time, the number of individuals experiencing homelessness has increased in the Loop and Near North neighborhoods. At the same time, the city's vulnerability to climate change has grown year by year. The lake has risen, our seasons have become more extreme or mild in unexpected ways.
My name is Jack Kelly with MKB Architects. While we've done some commercial work, the heart of our work is in working with the community. And that can be on a number of levels, it can be permanent supportive housing, it can be community centers, food pantries. We're there to, to support them and design for them. If the idea was to build a new SRO, how would you build it? People talk about wraparound services, but this is on a scale that's never been done with also kind of the blue chip best providers in the city. All in one place, so we get the housing, we get the healthcare, we get the refitorio. We get a number of other services that are brought around in one location.
We were excited to have social wraparound services for people who are homeless in the city, pairing it with environmental justice. Finding a net carbon zero building and pairing it with this program, something that you don't see happen.
It was amazing on this project how all the partners brought these great programs to be combined. And then every time we had these conversations about how to combine them. The opportunities for new ideas of expansion just kept growing and growing and the building kept getting better. It just kept finding these synergies that transcend what the competition brief was about.
What's happening with this project, I think, is wonderful because it's gonna connect folks who are homeless. In, in many ways, just the same way that they are in our community. And given the opportunity for employment, to live, live a decent life. And that's what we're about, that's what we're trying to do, we want to make sure that we're providing opportunities for folks to get into the coffee world. But in many cases, when these shops or these opportunities aren't given in communities like ours. There's, there's very little chance for someone to get into this field.
I was born in Puerto Rico, my parents migrated to Chicago when I was about five years old. From the very beginning of the project. I had a conversation with Jack Kelly, the architect, about creating an art space, creating a library, an art gallery. And a space for an artist in residency to take place for artists who are homeless, artists who don't have the opportunity to exhibit their work. And so, you know, my idea was to really think about the creation of that component, the component of bringing culture, arts. History and the city together within the structure of the building.
Hi, my name is Jill Conklin, Strategic Officer of Food for Soul. We are an international cultural nonprofit, born out of Modena, Italy, founded by Chef Massimo Bocciara and Laura Gilmore. With a dream that hospitality, beauty, and community can create a more sustainable, healthy, equitable future for all. As a global partner to the United Nations Environment Program and with Massimo as a goodwill ambassador. We know we are at a time of great challenge and opportunity and a call to act to respond to the climate impact that's affecting our cities. Through solutions that foster inclusivity, economic mobility and bring us closer to nature. Our urban landscape must reflect principles of design that care both for our planet and people. The refitorio on the ground floor is a perfect foundation to stimulate cohesion, connection, and strengthen resilience. Starting with the food model and the creativity of chefs and the refitorio culinary team. To reclaim and repurpose imperfect surplus ingredients that would otherwise be wasted. Transforming them to nourishing meals for those that are facing food insecurity.
So what we do here at Inspiration Corporation is we help people improve their lives and increase their self-sufficiency. And we do that through programming like housing and food service training. We were founded by Lisa Nygro, who was a police officer. Who encountered people who were experiencing homelessness on the street frequently and just really felt that there was a better way that we could treat people with dignity and respect.
I was like 20 below and my blankets had froze. The fireman said, cut my shoes, because she was cutting my foot to see was I still alive? Because I woke up, when I got up, my feet was just froze from being out there, so. I know how it is, stuff out there in the blizzard, Inspiration just helps a lot of people, man, helped a lot of people into the food industry. A lot of people graduated from this program we have off the hill. We had an employment program, a lot of peoples took advantage of that program. Lady like Tara, she comes in, she deal with everybody that's homeless outside, she helps them try to get on the street. She helps them right now, the Cobra 19, she helps them get their link card, she helps them get their social security card, state ID. Downtown location is gonna be awesome, because it's gonna be more, it's gonna be a place where people know about. You know, they know about慈善 charity, they know about Pacific Garden Mission, they know about a couple of shelters on the west side, they know about all these places. They're gonna know about Inspiration Corporation now, they're gonna know they can go there and get help. Man, when you are all night long and you get up in the morning, you can get a bowl of hot grits or some oatmeal and some eggs, so easy, and some bacon and. A nice glass of orange juice or milk. Things go our way when this comes for us, we're gonna do the right thing and we're gonna take care of the community like we're supposed to.
All right, that one worked, so we'll, we'll figure it out. So thank you so much for that video, Inspiration Exchange Team, we'll go for questions for, for you.
All right. Let me get straight to the questions. Some of these, I think, were from the prior. Team, but why don't we get straight to a question that I always ask is just about. The project financing, the budget, kind of overview of the diversity of the team, the breakdown for. Of the budget within that diversity, if someone can speak to that?
Absolutely, Alderman King, well, first of all, let me just say thank you so much to everyone participating today on behalf of the Inspiration Exchange Team. We're very excited to answer your questions and hear your concerns and thoughts around the project. My name is Evan Johnson and I'm the Chief Development Officer at Inspiration Corporation, who's one of the nonprofits that would be co-owning this project. Just to start us off, I will say that the total project budget for this site comes in at around $40 million. And I'm gonna introduce Sue Weimer, who is the representative from Turnstone Development Corporation, the affordable housing developer. Who would be one of the other co-owners of the space, who can talk through how that budget falls down throughout our, our project partners and how that reflects in the diversity of our team.
Hi, can you hear me okay, this is Sue?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay, good, so we're one of the co-owners of the, of the two nonprofit organizations. Turnstone Development has a fully African American board who will own 65% of the total $42 million development. Inspiration Corporation will own the other 35%. And it represents a collaboration of six other nonprofit organizations, three of which are minority led. Six of our eight firms on the design team, both architecture and construction, are women or minority owned businesses. And we're gonna have another member of our team kind of go through the goals around the minority hiring, which we have a plan for that as well. The project seeks to provide services and support to Chicago's community of people experiencing homelessness. 77% of whom are black, according to most recent data, so that is our. Equity question as far as diversity. Before we go on with the budget, would we like to have Ernest speak to the goals around minority hiring?
Okay, thank you, Sue, oops, thank you, Sue, I thought my mic was off. This is a construction team that is 60% with Turner Construction and 40% Brown and Moulman. Our goal is a 60, 60% minority in female construction utilization by contract. And 60% MWBE workforce, we have attained that on many occasions. You know, this is what makes it easy to obtain is actually the owner. The owner being willing to, to meet those, those goals and I've been, I was gonna say pleasantly surprised, but not. And I've been, I was going to say pleasantly surprised, but not pleasantly surprised, but just elated that this owner is willing to set those kind of mandatory, mandatory goals for minority female utilization.
Thanks, Ernest.
So it's very important to us at Turnstone and our board to address racial and economic equity in our work and see it through the right lens and ultimately impact social resiliency, which is why we provide high-quality, affordable housing to a diverse array of communities.
Great. And you said it's a $40 million budget? Is that soft and hard cost?
That is both soft and hard cost, yes.
Construction is, has a $30 million budget, construction hard costs.
It will be money needed from the city. Can we talk about the uses and sources?
Absolutely. So I'll lead us off by saying that we're committed to providing $10 million worth of private philanthropic support to drive the project. So about a quarter of the cost, we're going to be working with donors and doing traditional fundraising to flesh out the programming and the podium structure. That is really what constructs the two ground floors that feature the refitorio run by Food for Soul and the surrounding wraparound services for individuals experiencing homelessness. And then Sue, if you'd like to jump in and talk about the financing structure for the affordable housing component, which again, the tower itself constitutes about 65% of the total development costs.
Sure. Can you put up the slide on the uses and sources, Claudia? Okay, so you probably want to look at the sources. So we would be trying to obtain a private first mortgage in the amount of $500,000, Lytec in the amount of $13,950,000. And we've had some preliminary discussions with Ida and they were favorable. We have a lot of experience working with Ida. We don't foresee that as an issue. Illinois donation tax credits in the amount of $2,587,500. City soft funds, we would be looking at $6 million. And we can go into more detail if people have questions on that, but in addition to that, we'd look for Federal Home Loan Bank, AHP Funds, and $900,000. And we're extremely confident in these funds. We know we've worked with Federal Home Loan Bank on many other deals and we know they prioritize not-for-profits and serving lower-income population projects. And they like the donated property, so I feel strongly about that. The owner equity of $100, and then the Comet Energy Grant of $175,000.
And then for those of you who might be math whizzes who are wondering how the 24 and the 10 add up to the 42, Inspiration Corporation is working with BMO Harris's community investment team and talking about lending to help us get kickstarted on this project. And one of the things that we're most excited about with this development is it also provides our agency the opportunity to continue our work in social enterprise. And so we hope to use the refitorio space and the rooftop terrace as an event venue and include catering services, the likes of which we've offered for about 20 years out on the west side at Inspiration Kitchens in Garfield Park.
Great. There's a question about the massing and the strategy used for this. It was noted that it was different from the other two projects. Can you speak to this?
Absolutely. I think we're so different in a lot of ways. Jack, do you want to jump in and talk about that one?
Yes, thanks, Evan. You're right, Alderman. The one idea was that, I mean, one of our starting premises was the idea of turning our building, unlike the other three entries, that we couldn't envision not allowing a continued view of the Fisher Building and its beautiful terracotta facade. So with the Fisher Building, you have one of the, probably the top five landmarks in the city. So the idea of us gently moving to the north end of the site, also for, there's a couple of other reasons, the solar aspect of it for hitting our south facade, as well as creating that terrace on the third floor. So all these pieces kind of led us to this, but another kind of big part was that our kind of scale of the project, you'll notice, is a lot different. So because we were able, with our client, to keep this at a manageable scale, it's kind of a good neighbor to a number of the other buildings. And so that breathing room that we give Fisher was one of the most important aspects of this. And Kara, I don't know if you have other comments?
Thanks, Jack. Yeah, that hit on it. We really were balancing between a proportion of the tower that helped us achieve our net-zero targets by some passive solar shading and proportion of opacity to transparency on the facade, as well as giving enough space for the sanctuary garden on the third floor. That's an intrinsic part of the Inspiration Exchange programming, which is a space for healing and educational space, growing of food, connecting to nature. And that is a space that really ties all of the goals together. And so it was a really important space and having it not only be large enough, but it also has a visibility to L that helps us project this notion to the people going by.
Thank you for that. Next question, the activation of the park, although a number of, this question wasn't asked to the other two, can you talk about your activation of the park?
Absolutely. Brenda, would you like to jump in and talk a little bit about the design that you all concepted?
Sure. So hi, everybody. I'm Brenda Keesgen with Site Design Group, the landscape architects on this. While our, this plan that we're showing is our future plans for this park, the main programmatic areas were really meant to kind of provide that visual connection to the refitorio and to the culinary arts in the kitchen that is happening, as well as providing kind of open space along that arts cafe. Kind of in an interim, we seek to kind of activate the existing lawn area and the plaza space on the south side before we develop the additional funding to, for the arts and the cultural programmatic side of things. And I think Carlos could probably speak a little stronger to the programming, the arts programming.
Yeah, so I mean, one of the ideas from conception was really to sit down and think about how the building moved between the kitchen, obviously the park, very important to me because I've, as a young person going to Columbia College, growing up in Chicago, I saw this park change over the years, but never really had the opportunity to see it become what it could be. And, you know, curating programs where you can see films in the park, curating sculptures with artists from Chicago and around the world. Food for Soul is one of our partners. And they have connections to, you know, artists like JR, internationally known artists and chefs. And then bringing that component year-round, even maybe even in the winter, into the inside of the building. So the park will serve as a different park from Millennium Park across the street into the art space, into the kitchen, into the public space between the two floors that we have here, kind of where the hand is and the people are walking into. And that, you know, you would go up to the terrace. So the flow of it was very important for us. It's very important for me to be able to think about also creating a library, like I said in the video, they would collect photography and film books. We have a lot of donations already on board of artists who want to donate books and galleries around Chicago who want to donate books. We're going to reach out to the MOCP. My work is in part of their collection. So there's a lot of moving parts in the space that we, you know, that we want to collaborate with communities. Go ahead.
Thanks, Carlos. And yeah, I just wanted to add one more thing about the park before we went too often to arts and culture. One thing that I want to point out is that really every design piece of this project has been done with the intentionality of providing the best possible services to the community of people who are very low income or experiencing homelessness downtown. And one of our collaborator groups, Urban Growers Collective, that's led by a wonderful Chicagoan named Erica Allen, is concepting a whole urban agriculture and horticulture training program to provide pathways to green jobs. So beyond the arts and culture programming in the park, that's really for everyone to engage with and become part of this project, we also hope to provide apprenticeships where people can be involved in caretaking in the park and feeling that sense of ownership and building skills to connect them to sustainable careers.
Can you, there's a question that I think related to that. Can you talk about the investment in some of the neediest folks in our city? And were there other models that you modeled this around? Or are there models around there that you've seen with the same type of wraparound services?
That's such a great question, Alderman King. Thank you. What I can share with the public is that the Inspiration-
It's not mine, I will say. It's someone else's. I-
Well, to share with-
-live, but I won't take credit for it.
To share with whatever genius asked it. This project is really the culmination of a planning process that's been going on for more than two years. And so the agency that I represent, Inspiration Corporation, has been providing services to Chicago's community of people experiencing homelessness for more than 30 years now. And we and a lot of other providers in this city have seen over time that as the costs of doing business in the Loop have increased and have kind of driven providers out of that area, conversely, the number of people experiencing homelessness, and especially people experiencing chronic and unsheltered homelessness, has really increased in that core area in the downtown central business district. And so there was this kind of conundrum going on where people wanted to provide services to this population and were really struggling to find out how to do it. And so a couple of years ago, we and a few other groups got together and started talking about this. And the plan that you've seen in the video and that's in our proposal boards came out of a lengthy two-year period where we convened a planning committee that represented more than 30 other agencies in the city, individuals with lived experience of homelessness, people like Rodney Lewis, who you saw speak at the end of our video, and started talking about what could you do in a space in the Loop that could be most impactful to solving some of these issues related to social isolation and the separation of our communities and build equity and really live up to these values that the city of Chicago is trying to express and that the C40 competition is centered around of overcoming social vulnerability of providing inclusion and equity. And so that group is represented here today in a lot of different ways. And the project that you see really came out of those conversations and included people who were already providing services. So I'm going to actually pass to Ed Stellan, who can talk a little bit more about his experiences actually providing services to that population now in the Loop and why we believe so much that this is the right answer to this problem that's bedeviled the city for so long.
And while you're doing that, Cindy, how much time do we have?
Five minutes.
Okay, so I just want to, because there are a number of other questions, and if you can, speak to some specifics in there, like how many units, the unit types, and things of that nature.
Great. Evan, I'm going to keep this super trimmed down. And so basically, Ed Stellan, Executive Director, Heartland Alliance Health, have been with Heartland Alliance for 30 years. And what we do is bring healthcare to people, whether they're in shelters or on the streets. And we do a lot of outreach, including outreach in the Loop, including some really targeted outreach across the street at the Herald Washington Library, really forging a relationship with people and drawing them into care, providing not just medical care, but behavioral health service, dental care, everything that they need on one place.
Thanks, Ed. And then just to get some hard numbers down very quickly, a summary. This project includes 81 units of housing, half of which are dedicated for permanent supportive housing for people experiencing homelessness. The remainder of the units are at 30 and 60% of AMI. So all of the units in the building are for people making less than $39,000 a year and much, much lower. The refitorio program will serve meals for 150 people on five nights a week, and it does so using reclaimed foods from the waste stream. We expect to save about 120,000 pounds of produce every year and food providing and serving those meals. As a part of that work, we'll be working with thousands of volunteers each year. So we really hope that everyone will participate in this project and be a volunteer if we're lucky enough to win. And then in the kitchen, the chefs that come into work with Food for Soul will also be working alongside apprentices who are working on bridging into the culinary arts. So we expect to provide about 63 long-term paid apprenticeships at the site, including both the culinary, as well as the barista program that you saw in the video, and the urban agriculture that I was talking about. And that's all in addition to the work that Ed's team is talking about doing at a full federally qualified health clinic that could serve up to 5,000 visits a year, as well as access to hygiene services, laundry facilities, and a number of other things. So hope that got everything out there.
And are these, what type of units are they? Like a single, double-
Studio.
Studios. Okay. And someone asked, what's the owner equity before loans and grants?
So I think if I understand this question correctly, I can say that Inspiration Corporation will be funding the majority of the podium structure over $10 million from what you would consider our equity as a nonprofit, from donation revenue, and then working on some other tax credits. And then Sue, maybe you want to speak to Turnstone?
Yeah, I would go back to the, if you would, back to the slide that showed the uses and sources, right? So were there specific questions that were had regarding those sources?
I think because we're a nonprofit consortium, there's no traditional investment structure. So it's a little hard to answer the equity question. There definitely would be a significant investment from the city of Chicago. But one other thing that I would just say is, we really believe strongly that over time, that investment will be paid back. If you consider the incredible amount of leverage that the population of people experiencing homelessness rely on, on the emergency response system, the ambulance calls, the hospital visits, the police services, and looking around at studies from similar projects across the country, we really feel strongly that over the first 10 years or so of the lifetime of this project, it would pay itself back in terms of reducing our reliance on those kinds of emergency ad hoc services and providing a really, a more intelligent and forward-thinking way of delivering services to people before crises develop.
Right. And we believe that we would be competitive for a 9% tax credit allocation from the city because our project is all about the empowerment focus that fits in exactly with the city's concentration on social justice and equity. So under the current QAP at Ida, the site is not in an Ida opportunity area, which is why we're really focused on the city credits. And we would submit under the city's next round, expected to be due in, I believe, July.
I think, I'm trying to see if there are other real estate taxes, you would pay real estate taxes, that came up before.
Yes.
How does the site work for the park get funded? Is that included in the 20 million construction budget?
That's a great question. We did not. So our team committed $100,000 to initial park improvements, as well as the really wonderful design that came from Brenda and her group. What I can say is that we're really seeing this as the beginning of a process of community engagement, and we're very committed to working with other nonprofit organizations, the city's philanthropic community and the public to continue to strengthen the concept of this project. And so we'd really like to reach out to the philanthropic community and commit that both Inspiration Corporation and Turnstone will help to raise the funds necessary to put the park vision in play that we've set down. We just couldn't, didn't feel like we could guarantee it in our initial proposal.
And how much additional do you think that will be?
We'd estimate that around a million and a half to 2 million, based on the design that's included in this proposal.
Cindy, are we at time or do we still have?
We are out of time. Good job, Alderman, and thank you so much for answering all those questions, Inspiration Exchange Team.
Thank you so much.
And please continue to, thank you, please continue to answer the questions in the Q and A box, please. I'll go ahead. We've resolved our AV issues. Thank you for your patience, everyone. I'll go ahead and share my screen. Play the video. This is for Team Assemble Chicago.
In Chicago, the architectural innovation really comes from the response to challenges of the time. And today's challenges are really about housing inequity and climate change.
Assemble Chicago is a new civic hub in the Loop that brings Chicagoans together, serves neighborhoods throughout the city, provides apartments for the Loop- serves neighborhoods throughout the city, provides apartments for the loop's essential workforce, all in an inspiring carbon neutral building. Hi, I'm Will Woodley. I'm the Regional Vice President of Development for the Community Builders. The Community Builders is one of the nation's leading mission-driven developers. Our mission is to build and sustain strong communities where all people can thrive. In Chicago, we've not only built over 2,000 homes for a mix of incomes, we've also delivered spaces that help to strengthen communities while also bringing them together.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jeannie Gang. I'm the founding principal and partner at Studio Gang. We're an architecture and urban design practice headquartered right here in Chicago. We've been working on large-scale projects in downtown Chicago like the Aqua Tower in St. Regis. But this project provides an opportunity to really bring our design skills toward a project that addresses this geographic inequities in the city and really can start to make change for all of our residents.
With Studio Gang, you not only get exceptional design talent, but you get a real commitment to social justice and equity. And also a focus on bringing people together with each other and with nature.
We have assembled a team that truly reflects the diversity and talent of our city. At every stage and in every discipline, we have brought together minority and women-owned business leaders for the development of Assemble Chicago, including a mentor protege program that will truly support small businesses and help them grow.
We called the project Assemble Chicago. And we did that because it will give people in Chicago a chance to share in the prosperity of downtown and, and be part of downtown.
This project is a real opportunity to support our downtown's post-COVID revitalization, but particularly to do so in a way that promotes a more equitable and more sustainable Chicago.
The project consists of three main elements. The first is a mixed-income residential community that provides comfortable, healthy living spaces and introduces new levels of affordability to the loop. The second is really the neighbor hub, which is a vibrant, community-centered base of the building that welcomes and supports groups from every neighborhood. And finally, there's the rejuvenated Pritzker Park, which works together with the neighbor hub to create active indoor/outdoor destinations for all Chicagoans in the heart of downtown.
The Neighbor Hub is Assemble Chicago's base. It's all about creating an inclusive space for all Chicagoans to gather in downtown. It has everything from a food hall where local minority restaurants can grow to a Rush Wellness Clinic that will support our residents. It also includes an event coworking and collaboration space that will support nonprofit and community-based organizations.
The Center for Neighborhood Technology and Elevated Chicago will help lead a consortium of community-based organizations throughout the city that will help inform our design and operations of the neighbor hub space.
We are working with communities all over the city and the county. And so one of the things that I see that CNT can use this space for and create programs for is one, to bring that diversity of interest together, which is something that I think is phenomenal. Or to have either of those groups meet together in one space to develop strategies, to develop programs, to even have events where you invite in elected officials or people who can, for example, solve the problems. So having a space that is affordable, that is open to the communities, open to community groups is awesome. And I can't wait to have it built. And I hope Assemble Chicago is the next big development in downtown Chicago.
This would be possibly the only equitable transit-oriented development building in Chicago that not only provides housing for people, but also provides a health clinic inside of the development and also has all this amazing community space co-designed with communities to offer not only to the residents of the neighborhood, but also to residents of neighborhoods across Chicago.
All of these spaces are designed to be flexible and to bring people together, but also to be able to utilize the outdoors and connect directly into the park.
Having this building turn the park into its front yard is really important. The park certainly is almost like a desert zone right now. And being able to activate that will transform this part of State Street into something much more dynamic. This is a great opportunity for the city of Chicago and also for downtown.
Assemble Chicago will provide over 200 apartments for the workforce, making minimum wage up to $75,000 per year.
This is an essential workforce for our Chicago Loop. They help to operate our museums, our stores, our restaurants, our office buildings. And even though thousands of condos and apartments have been built since 2000, nearly none of those homes are affordable to this essential loop workforce.
The Loop is home to some of my favorite buildings in Chicago, like the Fisher Building and the Menadoc Building. They are recognizable for their beautiful synthesis of structure and facades that are the result of a quest for natural daylight resulting in the Chicago window. These buildings were workplaces and the Chicago window was extremely innovative at the time because it really maximized the amount of natural light and air reaching the interior. Our design updates this facade language with 21st century technologies and materials to achieve a significantly more energy-efficient building. With the apartments, we stacked the living room and the bedroom in plan so both can reach out and touch the facade. This allows both spaces to get tons of fresh air and light and to have protection from the sound of nearby L train.
To achieve net zero, Assemble Chicago's carbon offsets are actually solar panel investments in other Chicago neighborhoods.
I've been doing high-performance buildings for a while now. And 20 of those years, I've actually collaborated with Jeannie on, on these high-performance projects. And one of the themes which we've always focused on, on is how do we think about sustainability early on in a project? So the whole idea is to approach this in a very integrated fashion and incorporate them early when key decisions on the design of a building are made. We finally made a decision to, to use the special mix of concrete which actually captures carbon. And there's a very specific reason we did that, because we, we wanted to find that optimum balance between reducing carbon and the affordability of construction, because we want this project to be replicable, replicable, not just here in the US, but around the world.
We're ready to build this thing. Things are totally ingrained in the design, like the biodiverse gardens, the photovoltaics on the roof, the natural ventilation, and all these things come together to provide resilient and sustainable housing.
Assemble Chicago's goals are ambitious, but the Community Builders has over 55 years' experience delivering these types of developments. And we've assembled the right team to deliver this development for all of Chicago.
It's not only an example for Chicago, but it could really be something that can be used worldwide as how to make cities more inclusive.
All right. Thank you so much for that video. Thank you, Team Assemble Chicago. We'll start with the Q and A.
All right. Yeah, I see the questions are coming up in the Q and A. I've got my set of questions anyway, but I'll start with a Q and A as you suggested. Cindy, can you explain the public function of the large stair that enters Pritzker Park? Is this open to the public to access the upper roof garden?
Nope. Well, start off with answering that question. Jeannie, if you want to start off with answering that question?
Sure. Thank you so much. That's a great question. I think it's, it's really important about this building is that it, it reaches out and the whole bottom part is called the Neighbor Hub. It's really for all Chicagoans. And there are community spaces, event spaces, places that you can meet. There's a food hall and all of these functions come together on these two levels. There's a publicly accessible elevator. There are public restrooms built into this stair. So it's really like a, like a gift to the public space in the city. It really reaches out and becomes the front porch, you know, to, to the building. So we're, we're seeing it as something that really makes this place available for everyone. Great place to go hang out and, and be invited into the, take, take part of the activities going on there.
It, just as a follow-up, they were talking about the ground floor uses as well. Like you mentioned one, but can you talk about them in totality, what the uses will be?
Yeah, certainly. And just quickly, I'm Camina Brooks with the Community Builders, Senior Project Manager with TCB. And just to explain the ground floor uses, which include the Neighbor Hub as well as spaces for the building residents. Starting, if we orient ourselves along State and Van Buren is the Neighbor Hub Food Hall that will provide opportunities for small minority businesses to expand into the loop. And then at the corner of Van Buren and Plymouth is a grocer that will provide fresh foods and produce to residents, patrons in the neighborhood, CTA riders and tourists alike. And then as you go down, Plymouth is also, there's an entrance for the residential component of the building as well as a comprehensive health clinic that will be operated by the Rush University College of Nursing and will provide primary care as well as mental health to support the residents. And then if we could circle back to State Street, the food hall will actually connect to the flex space. Yes, thanks. Will, will connect to the flex space, which can serve as one, an extension of the food hall for seating, but also can be converted to host events such as art crawls or markets or really other type of community events. And then adjacent to the flex space is the Neighbor Hub Lobby, which includes coworking space and as Jeannie mentioned, an elevator that leads up to that second floor, larger meeting and event space. And then at the second level, as she also said, can, can be accessed by the Tribune Stair.
And should, and maybe Jackie could speak a little bit more too about using those top floors.
Yes. Thank you very much for the opportunity. Jackie Grimshaw, Center for Neighborhood Technology. And what we will be doing as part of this project is using our expertise in urban sustainability, resilience, equity to, and community engagement in the programming of the, of the neighborhood space. So, you know, people in the neighborhoods need to have a connection to downtown that we think this is an opportunity for them to have meeting space, to have, have collaborations and, and, and event space so that it, it belongs to them. So they feel an ownership in. So one of the things that we also believe is important is that we can use, you know, the, the space to achieve some of the sustainability by having classes or workshops in, in, in the neighbor space to teach people how to do things like community gardens or other, how to deal with issues of flooding and so forth. So we see it as an opportunity for community groups to come in downtown and own a space that they consider theirs as well as what we will be doing with the consortium of CNT is making programs that are things that people in communities want to, to have access to.
Okay. Thank you for that. A question that came up last time, has a developer ever built the high-rise before?
The answer is yes. The Community Builders is currently building high-rises in New York City. We have another project in pre-development in the Washington DC metropolitan area. This would be the first high-rise we're developing in Chicago. But the, the Chicago team has been working in Chicago and around Chicago for over 20 years. And we currently have a development under construction that it's not a high-rise, but it is similar in scale and complexity. It is also, it's about $110 million development. We're building city streets. It's mixed-use, mixed-income, transit-oriented, so it is similar. But we, we do have the experience to deliver this building.
Great. So I'm gonna scoot into some of my projects, which will be redundant, I guess folks should be prepared by now. But I had one particular, you talked about solar panels on other buildings to try and achieve your net zero. Can you speak to that? How do you get other buildings involved? You know, what, what kind of that? Oh, you know, just speak to how you will seek to do that.
Camina, can I start that out and then ask Sachin to join me? I forgot to introduce myself. I'm Jeannie Gang and I lead Studio Gang. We're the architects for Assemble Chicago. And we're really excited about the strategy. You know, if you take a high-rise, there's no possible way to get enough solar panels, even on the side of the building, the top of the building. There's no way to get enough to, to come to so totally empowered on-site. So a lot of the, you know, all of the projects need to go with some contribution of offsite generation. And what's really cool about our project is that we're also bringing that ability to the neighborhoods. And Sachin's really excited about this, so I want him to join in.
Thanks, Jeannie. Again, I'm Sachin Anand with DBHMS. I'm the sustainability expert on the team. So, so what we've done is typically on, on a site like this where you can't meet all of your requirements for renewable energy to offsetting the energy which you're using, you, you would typically buy renewable energy credits or have, have a power purchase agreement, which really is, is a way to bind those credits and, and you benefit, say, a wind farm in Iowa or a solar farm in Texas or somewhere outside the community. What the Community Builders has done is, and, and the Assemble Chicago team has done is to, to make a commitment to investing some of the benefits of that renewable within our city. And 50% of our renewables will come from solar panels installed on the Oakwood Shores community in the Bronzeville area. So, 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 so that's a very innovative way. And, and one of the things the team hopes is, is that it can be replicated elsewhere within Chicago and outside of Chicago.
It, and I, I think it actually might be worth noting to how this was actually connected to the material we use for concrete versus timber, because kind of speak to it in the video, but part of the savings we got, we got to the same reduction in carbon going with this innovative concrete versus timber, but it led to savings that allowed us to do the, the solar investment. I don't know, Sachin or Jeannie, if you want to speak a little bit more to that about the options we looked at?
Sure. So we, we, we looked at both CLT for, for timber structure and the carbon capture concrete. And, and we, we wanted to make sure that we were optimizing the, the embodied carbon in the building and also the operational carbon. And, and one of the, the core principles for the team was that we, we didn't want to have bling in the building, but we wanted to be practical. And, and we wanted to, to make sure that whatever systems we put into the building are robust enough and last the life of the building. I've been doing this for 25 years. And, and very often when we do sustainable projects, we, we get carried away. And when we put systems and technologies which, which, which don't last the lifespan of the building and can cost hundreds of thousands of dollars in operating costs. It was very important to kind of focus on, on, on keeping things simple, but still achieving the C40 goal of net zero.
And to add on to that too, we, you know, we found that it was really important to understand the architecture. This is like the most important place in Chicago for its architecture. It's a historic district. And we want, we really looked at the buildings around us and analyzed them and wanted to fit into this context because this is so key. It will also be really important for, you know, reviving the loop after COVID and bringing people back downtown for this important architecture. So it's also the way that we turn the corner and, and really articulate all sides of this building is very in common with the buildings around it.
Great. I didn't mean to cut you off. Are you done?
No, I was just saying, you know, it's, it's like a dialogue with the architecture that's around it and it's really enduring and lasting. And we're imagining this here, you know, for a hundred-year building and something that is really important to us and to Chicago.
Thank you. Some more kind of detailed questions. How many units in the building again? And can you talk about, you know, what type of units there? Single, two-bedroom?
Yeah. John, could you put, yeah, perfect. So hopefully folks can see this. We're proposing 207 apartments. They are a mix of studios, one-bedrooms and two-bedrooms, predominantly one-bedrooms. We're really proud of the design of our units. We feel like they're a combination of efficient, but also really comfortable, efficient from a cost perspective, but also really well-designed. Again, it's predominantly one-bedrooms, but we do think that there is a need for two-bedroom apartments for smaller households that want to live downtown. And what's really important to us as well is the sort of incomes that we are seeking to serve and to help here. It's basically It's basically a third at thirty percent AMI, a third at sixty percent AMI, and a third at eighty percent AMI. And that relates to, I think, a really important point around this concept of workforce housing that we're talking a lot about today. And but particularly workforce housing that addresses equity and opportunity in a way that's necessary. It's important to kind of understand that downtown Chicago has been the fastest-growing downtown in the last two decades. So since two thousand, there's been thirty thousand condos and apartments built in and around downtown Chicago. And unfortunately, almost none of them are affordable to most of the workforce in our restaurants, in our stores, and our theaters, our museums, our hotels. And those individuals are mostly earning about fifty thousand dollars or less, down to minimum wage, or their family households that are earning seventy-five thousand dollars or less. And we feel it's essential that, or this is such a unique opportunity, that we really need to try to help those that portion of our essential workforce that's been excluded. So, you know, there's a lot of talk about these different workforce units. And when you start to talk about workforce units that are for ninety percent AMI or a hundred and forty percent AMI, folks earning those incomes can already afford to live downtown. There's there are places for them to rent. There's a lot of units, as I already mentioned, and they can and do already live downtown. The people that the workforce that works downtown that we're talking about trying to help are the ones that currently there are no options for them to to live close to work. And so again, it's it's it is a mix of incomes. It's from minimum wage to seventy-five thousand dollars. So it's a mix of incomes, but it's those incomes that have been excluded so far.
Can you talk about the cost of the project?
Yeah, it's about a hundred and two million dollar development.
And then sources?
Yes, I'll go right into the sources. So first, nineteen point seven million dollars is a private loan, sort of thinking of it as like a first mortgage. And we are really proud. One aspect of that loan, there's actually two things I'm really proud. But the first, in terms of how we're raising that fund, those funds. First, in order to help with that financing as well as to ensure really strong, long-term ownership and management, we're committed to moving our TCB Chicago, Community Builder Chicago offices, which are currently on the South Street, into this building and to pay market rate commercial rents, long-term leases. And that actually helps us generate seven, almost seven and a half million dollars of this debt. So that's TCB committing to market rate commercial rents for our office space at this location that generates seven and a half million dollars there. And like I said, it's also good because, you know, we're long-term owners, but this is a very important site. And so we will be onsite, our leadership, asset management, development, property management to ensure operations. So we think that's kind of like a double win. The other aspect that's important about that nineteen point seven million dollar private debt, we are, as we talked about in the food, describing the neighborhood, we do have a food hall that is going to be for approximately five minority-owned restaurants, businesses, to have an opportunity to expand into the loop. We but we aren't going to be charging a market rate rent for them. The triple-net rent that we have for that is approximately eighteen dollars a square foot. That's, you know, that's that's not nothing. But that's certainly not what the typical rents would be for a business. So we're really proud that we're able to kind of subsidize that rent for minority-owned businesses to move into the loop, to expand into the loop. And the way that we're helping to underwrite that is we actually have impact investment funds that we're going to put in a reserve. TCB has impact investment funds that we're going to put in a reserve. It's going to sort of depend on what the lender requires, to be honest, but it's probably somewhere in the range of a half a million to a million dollars. So we would be using those funds to sort of help support the minority-owned restaurants that would go into the food hall. So that's, I'll go through the other sources quicker, sorry, but that's the that's the private debt. We do have a significant amount of tax credits that we would be requesting from the city. But I think it's really important to note that those are federal funds that the city has to allocate. The Department of Housing gets every year and they look to allocate those funds specifically to provide apartments like we're describing. And they never basically have the opportunity to do that in the loop, except for hopefully through this development. The amounts for that are, it's forty-eight million dollars in tax credit equity. Most of that is through four percent credits, which are not a scarce resource. It's not a competitive resource. We also have four and a half million dollars in Illinois Affordable Housing Tax Credits. That's also a state source that the city gets and they need to allocate it every year. So again, we think this is the perfect location for that. And we do have funding from ComEd. Camina has done a great job connecting with them in advance to propose almost seven hundred thousand dollars from ComEd. And we do have CHA funding of approximately fifteen and a half million dollars.
Right. So can you speak to, so you've got about a hundred million dollar budget. Can you speak to the diversity of your team as it relates to that budget? Where's it? What's the ownership? What the demographics of the ownership?
Yes, I can. I can jump in and speak to it and then Will, you can jump in as well. I'll speak to on the diversity of the design and construction. Our team is comprised of extremely diverse local talent on the design and engineering for the firms that we currently have. It's sixty percent are minority-owned. And if you combine minority and women-owned, we have over seventy-five percent of the team being MWBE. And as we continue to build out the team, we will certainly seek opportunities for both minority and women-owned businesses to participate. You know, at this stage, we, on the general contracting side, we did not identify a general contractor. There is a bidding process with the type of city resources that we are utilizing. And, you know, also bidding will help us get the best value, which is particularly important if the city is providing funding. And when we do bid out to a general contractor, we will require that any general contractor present a joint venture partnership that includes a minority-owned contractor. Additionally, we are committed to achieving forty-five percent minority participation during construction on Assemble Chicago. And while the city's requirement is twenty-six percent, we are actually currently on track to achieve forty-five percent MBE participation on a current project that I'm working on in the fourth ward. So we know that this goal is certainly achievable. And then as it relates to just the budget number, construction budget is approximately eighty million. So at forty-five percent MBE, that would mean nearly forty million on the construction side would be with minority-owned businesses.
And you talked about design and construction. What percentage of the budget is that? I see your diverse team. I'd love to understand what, how much they're making.
Well, you want to answer answer that a bit? I think, you know, we're, like I said, seventy-five percent is MWBE and, you know, sixty percent is minority. So we're talking, yeah, we're talking, you know, a reasonable percentage of that.
So, yeah, in our, our overall design and engineering budget is approximately around four million dollars. And so
Four million of the hundred and two million.
Yeah.
Will go to this team right here.
To the the design team.
Yeah. Okay. Can you guys speak to the going back to questions here? I don't understand what G-Con, if they have a G-Con board, how useful are the construction costs? Sorry. Does anybody understand that? Nope. And and why are your requirements different than the other in not selecting a GC and how will that impact your timeline?
Yeah, I'll speak to it, too. So we actually checked in with the city of Chicago just to make sure we weren't missing something. And, you know, it's actually come up in other kind of public forums recently that they do require three bits. And so we're sort of adhering to that requirement. We know it's coming. And frankly, in the past, sometimes folks have brought in a GC and RFP level at our, at the stage of an RFP and then come to find out the city says, well, that's great, but you need to bid. So we've kind of, you know, this isn't our first rodeo. And so we kind of know that that is the requirement. And then Camina, I don't know if you want to speak to, there's also some advantages to doing it this way.
I just wanted to clarify that it's not necessarily a requirement of all RFPs. It's a requirement of certain funding, if you're requesting certain funding from the department.
That's a really good point. Yeah. If you're using tax credits, that's a really good point. If you're gonna, tax credits or other, you know, city funding is when it gets required.
Yeah. And can you talk about, I may have missed this, but the ownership? What's the ownership structure? Who owns this?
So TCB would be, is the is the sole developer. You know, like other projects that, you know, we talked about with tax credits, there is an investor who's sort of, you know, they're basically there to purchase the credits and provide the tax credit equity so you can develop at these rent levels. But TCB is on this project, the sole developer. We definitely value partnerships. And we want them to be meaningful. And, you know, we are proud of the strategy to partner with minority-owned restaurants in the food hall to have them, give them an opportunity to expand there. But in terms of the overall ownership of the building, it would be TCB. We are a long-term owner. We don't, you know, sort of develop and sell, but we would be the owner.
Okay. Were we on time, Cindy?
We're out of time for this team's Q and A. Thank you so much, Team Assemble Chicago. This has really been great to hear all of the team presentations and receive all the questions. We have over a hundred questions that the teams have responded to. So really, really, a lot of questions have been answered and we'll make sure to put a document on our webpage outlining the Q and A so that folks who just were listening to the recording, which will also be posted, they can see the Q and A that have been responded to from the teams, which I think is really insightful questions. Thank you, Alderman, as well. Do you have any last words?
Yeah, no, just thank you again for your leadership. You're, you know, always have us on schedule. And speaking of that, I know you mentioned in the beginning kind of the timeframe. Can you just mention briefly, you know, when the selection kind of will take place? We know, you know, things may change a bit slightly and when will we will be announcing the winners?
Absolutely. Yes. So first and foremost, you know, we have all this information on our webpage. We have the videos. We have the summary of the team projects and the team compositions. And the webpage is www.chicago.gov/c40. And we also have a survey and the link to the surveys on that webpage. And we're keeping the survey open till midnight, May sixteenth, so about two weeks from from now. And we will be selecting the team and announcing the winner really either by the end of May or early June, somewhere around there. And then we'll work with that winning team and continue the engagement process and continue the process to, you know, if there's financing they need to ask for, they'll have to do that process. So, you know, this is really still still is an ongoing process. It's not a final decision by any means. And we're excited to continue the dialogue with everyone and to hear people's feedback. And and as the Alderman said, you can also email your feedback to her office, wardzerofour@cityofchicago.org or dpd@cityofchicago.org. So welcome your feedback and your comments. And I want to thank the teams as well. I know this was a lot of work to submit the RFP submissions and they've been working on it for a long time. And, you know, the submissions are very thoughtful and we're very excited to see what could be proposed on the site. So thank you, everyone.
No, thank you. Definitely to the teams. These are all exciting and they're different ways. You know, I hate that, well, maybe we can just take, you know, the runners-up and put them in other areas. I've got a lot of vacant lots in the ward, so we'll, we'll try and make sure that, you know, everybody gets a chance if they'd like to continue. But no, in all sincerity, these have been some great projects. So I appreciate the participants and all that they have done to bring sustainability. And I like to say in so many different ways, you know, not just environmentally, but equitably and socially. And so thank you guys for, you know, being creative and bringing a lot to the table. Really appreciate that. The fourth ward will be recipients of that, so we're excited. Speaking of which, just wanted to thank also the selection committee again, which includes members from the community who live right nearby. I want to thank you for your time. We're all looking forward to this project coming to fruition. So thanks, everybody, for your time this evening.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Alderman.
Thanks so much.